Calling to order the Monday, August 8th, 2022, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henan?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Valani?
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack?
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Valani. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now move on to public comments. These are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the city, please sign in at the clerk's desk. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. I'll give you five minutes today. Assuming that this was the case. Seeing nobody running up, nothing, Mike? Okay, I guess we will close public comments and move on to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Harold, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda? Oh, what did I do?
Mr. Mayor, there was one piece of emailed correspondence for you.
Oh, that's right. We do have email correspondence. Go ahead, Gina.
Okay. Elizabeth Petrie, Berkeley, writes, "In regards to the invocation at the start of each meeting and the lack of diversity in the faiths represented," and talks about either showing more diversity or to stop the invocation.
Thank you. I had that written in my notes, and I still skipped right over it. Now, we will move on to this evening's order of business. Ms. Harold, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, July 18th, 2022. Two, motion number M-77-22. Matter of approving participation in the Thai Michigan teal campaign to promote awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Three, proclamation number P-23-22. Matter of proclaiming September 2022 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Four, proclamation P-24-22. Matter of proclaiming September 2022 as National Recovery Month. Proclamation number P-25-22. Matter of proclaiming September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Six, proclamation number P-26-22. Matter of proclaiming September 2022 as National Preparedness Month. Seven, proclamation number P-27-22. Matter proclaiming September 15th through September, or excuse me, September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any questions, corrections, or discussion? Danny?
Oh, that's me. Well, hi, everybody. My name is Danielle Wargo. I'm from Novi, Michigan, and I'm part of the Michigan Ovarian Cancer Alliance. We're very excited at the prospect of Berkeley participating in our Thai Michigan teal campaign this September. So teal, because that's the color for ovarian cancer awareness, September because that is National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. So for anybody who doesn't know, ovarian cancer is a deadly disease that there is no early detection screening for. That's why awareness is a huge piece of this for us. So to bring that to Berkeley is our mission. We are a statewide organization, so we hope to get that to everybody. But by participating in this campaign, we would tie teal ribbons across the city to help spread awareness, get people familiar with ovarian cancer and what the symptoms are, which are bloating, pelvic and abdominal pain, urinary infrequency or frequency, and difficulty eating. So common symptoms that women might associate with something else. That's why awareness for this is huge because there is no early detection screening available. So we will take the ribbons back down at the end of September, but we do want Berkeley to know that Niok is a resource statewide 365 days a year to bring support, awareness to anybody who needs it. So we would love your participation and support in that program.
Thank you, Dani, and thank you for being with us this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Our consent agenda has passed. Again, thank you, Dani, for being with us this evening. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Harold, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no items, we move on to number two, please.
Motion number M-78-22. Matter of approving the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program purchase of one 2023 Ford F-150 pickup truck at a total cost of $52,706 from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-78-22?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Just a quick process note before the Director of Public Works gives you more detailed information on this item. But this was purchased through the cooperative bid. As we've said several times in the past, this allows us to utilize economies of scale in which several different member communities from across Oakland, Macomb, and any other participating community jointly purchase at a set list price. So it's one of the ways in which we make the public funds go a little bit farther. This was a budgeted item and an expected item to be purchased this year. So this is not an emergency replacement in any way.
Thank you. Mr. Director?
Evening. This one, Lisa, is pretty straightforward. It's a replacement for a 2006 Ford Escape. Purchased through Macomb County Cooperative Bid. Signature Ford is our local dealer for that. Any questions?
Questions for our director on this F-150. Councilmember Price?
I'm always curious, if we approve this tonight, how long until we expect to receive it?
The build date, they do not start building until, depending on the factory. The Michigan factory is beginning of October. I think Kentucky's later October. General build time is six to eight weeks, but with everything else going on, there's no guarantees on anything. We did look at some electric vehicles. We've been talking, trying to fit some electrical vehicles into what we do. Right now, I don't, we're just not ready for that, some mileage-wise. But we are looking for that for the future.
Oh, that's very good to know. And as we're looking at those build times and thinking about electric vehicles, I know those generally are much longer, so we need to be thinking ahead. So glad to know you are.
We're very limited on what we can get at this time. Even this order bank was open from beginning of July to the beginning of August for the entire year. So if you wanted an F-150, it had to be this month.
I think you and everybody else is in that same situation right now. Additional questions for our director? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for bringing this to us here tonight. Is there any resale value on the 2006? I know that certainly got a lot of years on it now, so...
I think there is some resale on it. I don't know if it's going to hurt us or help us, but it's hybrid. You know, it's kind of old technology still.
Yeah.
It's fine. It works fine, but it's old technology, and it's got batteries. They're 15, 16 years old now. But yeah, there is some residual value.
Cool. Yeah, just curious if there's any, you know, what happens to the old vehicles as the new ones come in, that kind of stuff, the fleet turnover kind of process?
Generally, we put them on an online auction, and we're doing pretty well with that lately.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Other questions? Before we come to our Blanchard, he's already gone, so it appears that you are escaping any further questions on this. Thank you for being with us, Sean. And Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-78-22?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Harold, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-79-22. Matter of authorizing the purchase of inclusive play equipment at J.C. Park at a cost not to exceed $241,055.40 from Landscape Structures, Inc., SDS 12-0395, P.O. Box 86, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 554-86-0395. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 615-950-974-000.
That's going to be a popular account number this evening. Is there a motion to approve M-79-22?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A good deal to say about these items. If you look to your agenda, this is the first of two related items, and the planning for this started a very long time ago, so it's been an exciting journey to get to this point. This comes to you by way of incredibly hard work from Teresa and her department, as well as a lot of different donations from a lot of different entities in our community, our business community, as well as the state itself. So it's really exciting to have this appear before you this evening.
Thank you. Director McCarleton?
Good evening. As the city manager said, I'm really excited to be standing before you, talking about this item. We've been talking about, over the last two, five recreation master plans, both in 2016 and 2021. One of the big things that people wanted to see within those plans were updated play equipment, more accessible walkways, and restrooms in parks. And this is the first stage of developing that in J.C. Park, which is our northernmost park, our second biggest park. It's almost three acres. Certainly a beautiful park, very fond in my heart. I grew up around the block from there. And what we decided to do at this park was something that we haven't done at other playgrounds and our other parks, which is to build a fully inclusive playground. We have inclusive play elements at all of our other parks, but this one is a fully inclusive. I want to be very clear, a lot of it is also accessible, but inclusive and accessibility are often interlinked, but sometimes not exactly. There are some stairs in the equipment, but there's mostly ramp structures, and then other inclusive and accessible play equipment. I'm really excited about what we're bringing. There's many elements within this playground that we don't have anywhere else in the city and that other cities still do not have. Things like the Zip Cruise, which is basically a zip line that makes it feel like you're flying, is both accessible and inclusive. The We Go Round is an element that a child that is fully able to, could go on and go around, but you could also put a wheelchair onto that, or a child with a walker. The We Saw is another accessible, and I could go on and on. The thing about the inclusivity at this playground is that the surface is inclusive, and it's also inclusive in terms of, there's a number of sensory items, there's a number of play panels, there's a lot of rope, which is a very inclusive element. We're going to have a small little sand area, a communication board. It's very inclusive age-wise and also ability-wise, and that's really what we wanted to develop. And I think we've done this here. It certainly comes at a cost, and the reason you see it broken out into two different motions is, was laid out in my memo regarding the installation and the surfacing, and then the play equipment. This, using it, doing it this way through Sourcewell for the play equipment gets us the lowest cost, and then also breaking it out for the installation and the surfacing, which will be the next agenda item. We obviously have another component of this, which was the crowdfunding, and I want to be sure that we talk about that. The crowdfunding that was done through Patronicity, the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, as well as MML, and the money that was raised to make this an even more extraordinary playground. And there were a number of businesses, a number of people, all of you, as I mentioned in my memo, and just really people who came out in support of this. We saw overwhelming support. We raised more than we needed to in order to get that match from the MEDC. And I think that says a lot, and I think the people that spoke favorably, I think people are going to be really excited about what we built here, and we're excited to get started with this. We were hoping that awarding it as quickly as we could, which would be today's meeting, would mean that we would have a fall 2022 installation. Unfortunately, because of lead times and lag times and shipping times and where things are with a number of industries right now, we're looking at an early spring 2023 install. Assuming that if it's approved tonight by council, we'll have updated communication on the city channels in the next week of terms of, we'll lay out the renderings that you've all seen, so that the residents can see what's going to be happening, and then also talk about the timeline with them. Happy to answer any questions today.
Questions for our director. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I don't really have questions. I just have comments. I remember, Teresa, when this was all in the planning stages, and we were talking about the Patronicity and the matching grant, and how much more you could do with that money. And it's so exciting to see that really come to, or be a reality now. I'm so proud of the work that you've done and your team, all the fundraising efforts, as Mr. Baumgarten laid out, as you have mentioned, because it truly was a team effort for all this money to come together. And what I'm really most proud of is the City of Berkeley, because we all know, like, where you put your money, where you put your feet, how you vote, and where you put your money is what matters to you. And this park really matters to this community. And so I'm proud of Berkeley and everyone that supported this park, because it was a long time coming, and it's just really exciting. And congratulations to you and your team, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions or comments? No. Well, I think we all agree with what Mayor Pro Tem said. We are incredibly excited and thankful for all of the work that you did, and our community coming together, and other supportive of the community to make this a reality. And all of the work, anyone that's ever written a grant or been involved in a grant knows just how difficult that is. And you've had a lot of success lately in that world. So we're incredibly grateful to have you as part of the team and for the work that you have done and will continue to do for our city for a long, long time. So thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-79-22?
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Harold, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-80-22. Matter of authorizing purchase of rubber surfacing and installation costs for play equipment at J.C. Park at a cost not to exceed $280,833.28, with an added $14,000 for contingencies to Pensura LLC, 889 South Old US 23, Brighton, Michigan, 48114. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 615-950-974-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-80-22?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani. Do you guys want to fight over that?
She's got it.
Okay. Supported by Councilmember Price.
Indeed.
We could at least do rock, paper, scissors. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, I happily defer to our expert.
Okay, Mr. McCarleton?
Thank you. So again, this is a little bit different, the way that it's broken out. The way that it's laid out is about 95% how communities do this. We are, we worked through a cooperative for the equipment. We wanted a play structure that matched a lot of inclusive elements and that we had not used in other parks. We worked with Landscape Structures. Landscape Structures, sole provider in Michigan and other states, is Pensura. Unfortunately, if you do the installation and the rubber surfacing with the purchasing cooperative, it's a much higher price, which I provided to you, so that you can see that. Because they're the sole provider, if we purchase from them separately and we have two invoices, we get a much bigger discount, and it says savings to the city. As I mentioned in my memo, we did go over what we had budgeted and raised for this amount. However, we have savings within the account that we are using from other capital projects that we know are coming in. So within that line item, we will be actually below what we have budgeted for the year. So we think it's worth it to be able to build what we want to build, and it's a nearly 8,000-square-foot play design with rubber soft surfacing, which is huge. So again, that's why it's broken out this way, and all of that will happen when the playground is built in early spring, hopefully weather permitting, sometime in April of 2023.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Price?
I'd just love to share a little story to illustrate, I think, the importance of this kind of surface. I was talking to a resident down in Oak Park, a grandma, who is about to take her kids down to a splash pad in Detroit, and bemoaning how long it would take her to get there. And I said, you know, there's one less than two miles north in Berkeley, and there's a playground where they can play, too. And she said, oh, that's fantastic. I'll absolutely take them there, but I can't do the playgrounds because of my walker. Because she assumed that it was mulch. And when I told her that it was a soft surface where her walker would be able to navigate it with her grandkids, her eyes just lit up. She teared up, and she was so grateful to know that resource was so close. So just wanted to share that with you, and thank you for taking the effort, making it work, to put in these really inclusive elements, so that all kids and their grandparents can enjoy.
I appreciate you saying that. One of the things that I think is often overlooked are caregivers who watch the children, right? When we talk about inclusivity and accessibility, and more and more kids are being watched by, you know, older individuals and grandparents, and it can be difficult, even sometimes heavy stairs or that sort of thing. I will tell you, there's certain equipment here, particularly that we saw, the four-person teeter-totter, that you almost always see grandparents with the children on it. So I think that that's a really often overlooked element to playgrounds and play areas, are the people that are watching the kids.
Yeah.
And want to be involved and be close to them.
Thank you for recognizing that and working for it. I'm so proud that Berkeley has this to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other additional comments or questions, again, thank you, Ms. McCarleton, for bringing this before us and all of the work that went into it. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-80-22?
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Harold, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-81-22. Matter of awarding a contract for installation of fencing at Community Field 2 and 3 at a cost not to exceed $28,863 to the lowest qualified bidder, Motor City Fence Company, 209 South Boulevard, East Rochester Hills, Michigan, 48307. In addition, allocate $2,886.30 for contingencies. Funds for this expenditure will come from account number 614-950-970-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-81-20?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was, also went out to bid. From a process note, we received several bids. We are very happy with the prices that came back, as it actually came in quite a bit under of the budget that we thought we were going to have for this particular project. We'll make the money go even farther, as we'll be splitting the costs here with the school district, as a good benefit of this will be for several of their school teams as well. So good project all the way around, and we continue to, or Teresa's team continues to very purposefully, very methodically improve each and every aspect of the parks that we have in our community.
Mr. McCarleton?
So as the city manager said, we did go out to bid for this. We received three qualified bids. Motor City Fencing has done a number of projects in other communities for other school districts. I spoke to a number of their references. They all spoke highly of the work that they did and the time that they did it. We are looking to do this a little bit later because of the fall season for the youth leagues, so we'll be starting this project, working closely with our youth leagues, but starting this project in mid-October when their season is done, but before the weather takes, so that we're ready to go in the spring. And most of it's pretty straightforward. We're not taking a whole lot of fence out. We have to take one out to put a gate in, and then we're fixing something at the batting tunnel fencing. But it's really putting in fencing. We've done this at a couple different parks and had success, and I think it's going to look great, and we'll clean it up. And we've had several meetings with the school district who uses our fields, and then also with the youth groups who use it, and everyone's on board with what's happening and where the fencing's going and how we're spacing them out.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. McCarleton regarding the fencing at Community 2 and 3? It's also something we've been looking at, doing, and glad that it is finally here, and hopefully we'll, again, continue to add upgrades to our fields and allow folks to have access that fits the different needs, whether it's school, whether it's, you know, the different groups that we have in the city. Something that certainly I'm looking forward to. Thank you for bringing this evening as well. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, well, hold on. Anybody in the audience, would you like to... Okay, sorry. Ms. Harold, now, would you please call the roll on M-81-22?
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Thank you, Ms. McCarleton. We now move on to item number six. Ms. Harold, ooh, almost said it.
Motion number M-82-22. Matter of authorizing the city manager to approve the proposal from Carlisle Wortman Associates, Inc., to provide professional planning services at a cost of $2,000 a month 2022 and 2023, and $2,200 a month 2024, 2025, through August 2025. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 101-801-817-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-82-22?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to the hiring of Ms. Kapalansky as our Community Development Director, we looked at some best practices and some ways to make the department as efficient as possible. And part of that was budgeting for a planning service to be kept on retainer in order to keep, maybe as things get busy, or they backlog a little bit, or simply to just have an additional expert in the room to discuss best practices with Community Development Director. We thought this was a good idea and a best way to best support the department as possible. I know we talked about this during the budget hearings as well, as it being a good idea. So now that we have our Community Development Director in hand, we want to transition Carlisle Wortman from the role of essentially having an individual serve as our full, or as our interim Community Development Director, now to just move into a consulting capacity, since we have the position filled. So for that reason, we bring this item for you this evening.
Thank you, Director Kapalansky. Would you like to add anything?
Just that the experience with Carlisle Wortman over the past couple years has been very positive. They've continued to be a great resource. It will be an excellent slate of experts to have help with various ordinance amendments. We have a lot of projects to tackle, and having another set of eyes and ears would be very beneficial.
Questions for our director?
I just have, thank you. I just have some comments. I'm very excited that we're bringing them on board to do this. I know we've talked about ordinance updates, and especially having just completed a master plan, you want those things to be in step or be reflective of each other. So I look forward to that overhaul, and I do not envy the task ahead of you, but I'm convinced that you are absolutely the person, you know, to get that done, and I think the services of Carlisle Wortman will certainly enhance and supplement all of that. So I look forward to a really beautiful end result. Thank you.
Me, too.
Additional questions or comments? No. You guys are all doing a wonderful job explaining this. Very, very thorough.
Brilliant.
Again, there are things that we've been looking at and talking about and glad to see coming to fruition. Thank you for bringing this to us. I guess there's no reason to belabor this. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-82-22?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number seven, please.
Motion number M-83-22. Matter of authorizing the city manager to execute a uniform video service local franchise agreement between the City of Berkeley and Wide Open West, Michigan, LLC.
Is there a motion to approve M-83-22?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can fill in some blanks for you, but City Attorney has worked most closely with the clerk's office and bringing this forward before you this evening. A couple items of note in the agreement is... A couple of items of note in the agreement is pretty boilerplate. It's standardized for essentially every municipality in the state. There are two sections that are left blank for the community's discretion. One percent is the local, or one portion is the local franchise fee, which we would fill in the percent upon the City Attorney's advice. We are going to fill in a 5% there, which is the maximum allowable. The second portion is the peg fee, which is also a percentage based. And that we will be going for 1%, which is again, the state mandated maximum as well. So in both instances, we'd be going for the highest amount possible, low numbers, but it is some revenue back to the community to allow Wide Open West to operate in the city for television services.
Mr. Attorney?
I think the city manager said that pretty well. Just one modification I would make in terms of the peg fees, the actual maximum that can be charged under state law is 2%, but 1% is the amount that that they were operating under with their previous franchise and the other video franchise holder in the city is also working for 1%. That's pretty much the standard for all the ICA communities. But other than that, what the manager said is correct. Back in, back before 2006, these types of franchise agreements, cable agreements, were negotiated with each and every municipality, led to a lot of inconsistent results. Industry lobbyists prevailed and the law, the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Act was adopted in 2006, which basically said, here's the rules, here's the agreement that everyone's going to use and municipalities, we'll give you a couple of blank lines you can fill in, but largely eroded our home rule in that respect and dictated these terms to us. And of course, there's also another, there's a federal layer of regulation too, which likewise takes away a lot of local discretion. So basically what this is, is a renewal of the video franchise agreement that had been in place for the previous 10 years with WOW and this would just be a continuation of that for another 10 years. Just one other thing I'd want to comment on, just in furtherance of some discussion that I've had with Councilmember Henan. As we know, WOW provides not only the video service, the TV, they also provide voice and internet as well. Those are not governed by this agreement. This is simply video. The voice and internet would be governed under the Metro Act, another law we don't have a lot of discretion, but a separate permit. We are looking into that. We've actually had a little bit of difficulty internally trying to locate the Metro Act permit for WOW. Doesn't mean we think that they're acting rogue. I rather doubt that they are. But we're trying to look at that, make sure all their permits are in order. And so you might be seeing that at some point in the future. You might be seeing that come before you and that would deal with the voice and internet and any concerns that are associated with that.
Questions for our attorney or city manager? Councilmember Henan?
Just a comment and the reason I had been asking about, you know, is this TV only, which it is, does it cover internet? It doesn't, is because of the numerous complaints we're hearing about the very poor internet service that WOW is providing. So I hope when that, when we do find those, when they do come before us, if they come before us, that they'll actually have a representative here so we can ask and find out how they're going to be improving the service for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions on this agreement? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Stewart, for clarifying and letting us know all of the few options that we have as it relates to anything, yeah, anything that happens to fall under us that we could say no, that it wouldn't really matter to some of these things anyway. So with that in mind, I do hope that we are able to at some point have additional conversations about the level of service that our residents have, especially as we are in an increasingly internet-driven world. It's incredibly important for communication and safety in most cases. For today, we'll just deal with this. So is there a motion to approve M-8322? I'm sorry. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-8322? I already got a motion.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Flannie.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. We now move to communications and who is up first, Ms. Harold?
Henan.
Councilmember Henan.
Right. Nothing from the Tree Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals will meet here tomorrow, August 9th, to consider allowing a home addition on an oddly shaped lot. They tentatively will have another meeting before we meet against on September 12th. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. I don't have anything to report from my committees this week. I do want to thank our city clerk, Victoria Mitchell, and her team, including Ms. Harold, for running another safe and secure and smooth election process. The redistricting, the results of the Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission led to a great deal of confusion in our region, but thanks to the efforts of our city clerk and her team, Berkeley residents were empowered in the election process and able to make their voices heard. And I'm very grateful for all the efforts of the volunteers, the workers, the staff, the election poll workers and watchers for being a part of that process. I also wanted to thank Parks and Recreation for putting on that fantastic Berkeley Beats concert a few weeks ago. I was able to go out and see the Billy Davis Rhythm Machine Band with special guest Mighty Michael, and it was so much fun. Not only was the music great, but the whole setup. I mean, turning our new playground splash pad field experience into a stage and people bringing out their lawn chairs and their blankets and the staff there making sure it all ran smoothly. It was phenomenal. And I know they have another concert coming up this Wednesday. I will let Mayor Pro Tem Dean give you all the details, but I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Price? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of quick updates as well. I too would like to extend my gratitude to the City Clerk's Office and all the volunteers for making a very smooth and seamless election process. And congratulations to my colleague on her, on her progress that she achieved as well as a part of that process. On the historical committee side, they meet again tomorrow, which is Tuesday, at 7:00, across the street in Public Safety Building. We have several new photos that have been recently discovered and scanned in, including a 12 Mile in Woodward being blocked by Grand Trunk trains and photos of the trolley stops that we had here in Berkeley. Most of these we've never seen before and they were taken in the early 1930s. So those are pretty exciting. There's a historic plaque for Angel School, which is now celebrating its 100-year anniversary, which has been approved and is in production right now. And that is a joint project with the Historical Museum, the Berkeley School Board, and the Berkeley High School Alumni Association to create that plaque and have that designated. And speaking of designations, the state has officially approved, excuse me, adding the Village Hall and Fire Station to the official list of Michigan historic buildings. It's long been regarded as a tremendous keepsake here in Oakland County and now it's officially on the records, which is terrific. And if you would like to check out that building, your visitors are always welcome. In particular, the museum is open on Wednesdays from 10:00 until 1:00 and on Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00. And you can visit them online at BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, Board of Directors meets the very next day on Wednesday at 8:30 in that very same location in the Public Safety Building, second floor. The agenda includes the annual election of officers, reviewing a new social media proposal, reviewing not one, not two, not three, but four mural applications, which is awesome, updates on several grants, Coolidge Crosswalks activation, and progress on the new public space on Coolidge south of Catalpa. And you can visit them online at DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, Your Honor, I was going to prepare some thoughts about procrastination, but I didn't get around to it. So.
Ba-dum-bum.
So with that, I'd just like to ask everybody to please stay safe and hug somebody that you love. It means more than you know. Please do that. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Appreciate you procrastinating as well. Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you. Well, I have a few Parks and Recreation updates for the remainder of the summer. The Ice Cream Social is Thursday, August 25th, at JCPark at 6:30. And the best thing about that, well, while supplies last, but the best thing about that is you can stay for the last movie in the park, which will happen at 7:00 PM, and it's Sonic Two. I don't know if you want to see one if you haven't before you see two, but you might want to prepare. Berkeley Beats will continue on Wednesday, August 10th, at Oxford Park with Harmonic Swell and the Bridge to Reverberation. And Wednesday, August 31st, at the Community Center, featuring Moxy Blitz. Both of the concerts begin at 7:00 PM. And finally, the Berkeley Cruise Fest Classic Car Parade is Friday, August 19th. The parade begins at 6:30 and travels west down 12 Mile from Woodward to Greenfield. I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. Very briefly, Planning Commission next meets on August 23rd at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And Environmental Advisory Committee next meets on August 18th at 6:30 on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Valani?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also have very brief updates. CEAC and TAC met together the other week to partner on providing feedback on the city website, the usability of it and branding and the process that's going on there. So that was great to bring those two groups together under that. There are no new updates from our chamber. And I'd like to congratulate our Public Safety Department on a very enjoyable and successful golf outing last weekend. I believe they raised close to $15,000, which will support our Lids for Kids initiatives. I was very happy to participate in that. Alongside Mr. Baumgarten, we were just a card away and I, there's some, there's some pretty serious golfing going on over there. And I would like to give our residents a friendly reminder that I've seen a lot of posts on social media and all that and have experienced in myself that there is a lot of wildlife in our yards, especially at 3:00 AM. Please don't let your pets outside unattended unless you want them to come in skunked. So stay safe. And that's all.
Thank you. I'm going to leave that one alone.
Yeah.
Mr. Baumgarten, we'll move on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. August is going to be a busy month for us for a number of different reasons. It typically kicks off one of the two really rainy seasons we have in the community. So just as a reminder to all of our residents, that we have storm grades are restricted for a reason. You may see some material collected on top or you may not think that in the midst of a storm, a street is draining as fast as it should. But every drop of water that's collected in a street is the one that's not in our system and most importantly, not in anyone's basement. So we allow, slow the flow is the term of the season here. Typically, streets clear 20 to 30 minutes after a heavy rainstorm. They'll be wide open again. I was out driving last Wednesday around the community in the midst of a rainstorm and that's about what I observed as well. So they were very passable just a short period later, but again, not in the midst of the rainstorm itself. So we got through this initial hello from August as far as rain goes and hopefully we get through all the rest of the months as well. Next up, August is also the time when our kids return to schools. So just in a couple of weeks, be very mindful that our sidewalks will get busy. We'll have a lot more students crossing. And then all around our schools, you'll see a lot of drop off and a lot of probably frantic parents as well. So just be mindful of that. Keep your head up when you're driving and always look to your sidewalks and crosswalks for the little ones. Last, but certainly not least, Mike Hunyer is retiring. Actually, he was supposed to do it this week. The man has such a large heart that he's staying on a full extra week to help train some of the folks that are going to be experiencing Cruise Fest for the very first time as members of our Department of Public Works. So Mike put 17 fantastic years into this community. Not only is, he's been with us for that long, but he's also one of our residents. He is one of the more dependable, one of the happiest individuals you've ever met, just always worked with a smile on his face. We're going to miss him around City Hall. I know Public Works is going to miss him around their facilities. And he's not going far, thankfully, and he'll still be, he lives on the corner street so you can get to wave hi to him from two different angles. But he is a fantastic gentleman that is, and it's going to be a loss to our Department to not have him around every day. But it's a well-earned retirement and we thank Mike for that. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a brief, but kind of somber, public service announcement, if counsel will bear with me for a moment. I had the unpleasant experience of coming directly here tonight from the funeral home, where I paid my respects to my friend and former business associate at my prior firm. Like me, he was a recreational bicycling enthusiast, although far more avid and accomplished than me. Tragically, my friend was one of the cyclists killed 10 days ago in the, while he was riding across the state in the Make a Wish charity fundraising event. It's been all over the news. I'm sure you've heard about it. I just want to take this opportunity just to, you know, just to mention that cyclists have no chance when up against a ton and a half of rolling steel. Yet these kind of accidents and tragedies seem to be happening far more frequently. It seems like every week you pick up the newspaper and there's a cyclist being run over and killed somewhere. So I just ask those who may be listening at home to just keep a careful eye out, whether around town, whether out on the country roads, wherever you are, especially this time of year, just keep an eye for cyclists on the road and on the sidewalks. I mean, they have a lawful, cyclists have a lawful right to share the road with you. So please share the road with them, be patient, and give them their space so that hopefully everybody can enjoy the activity and make it home safely.
Would you care to mention your friend's name?
My friend's name is Michael Salhaney, who actually, ironically, I was looking at some of the old paperwork for the WOW franchise and he actually had provided a letter advising the city the first time that the WOW video franchise was approved. But Mike was a real good guy. He's also the West Bloomfield City, or excuse me, West Bloomfield Township Attorney, but unfortunately leaves a loving wife and seven children, now without a father, while he was out doing what he loved to do, raising funds for charity and enjoying himself on his bicycle. So we'll all miss him. He was a real good guy, just one of those wrong place at the wrong time moments, unfortunately.
Well, thank you for sharing that, John. And I think it's probably appropriate that we end with that comment and just leave it right there. With that in mind, Ms. Harold, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll?
Price.
Yes.
Flannie.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. The August 8th, 2022 meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned. The August 8th, 2022 meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.